And the second one is the property that is along the railroad tracks, which they have leased for a number of years from the railroad during the process of acquiring that property. So it was approved by the planning commission. I think all that remains is the commission to do final action on it.
Okay, let's wait for a motion. Councilmember Dokken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to talk about item five, Second Street Southeast access discussion. I want to thank the planning commission and Megan Sauer for their effort. They basically covered the things that I was concerned about, and that is that we're getting a number of cuts exits on the Second Street, and it's a very narrow street. A lot of children play up and down on that street. And in one case, the exit out, the lights go into the bedroom in the front living room of a house directly across from that. And one of the concerns that I had was that we don't talk to the public about doing these things, and they have graciously, as you see in here, that they also talked about notifying citizens for the meeting much like the plan reviews for house moves. Mailing a notice to abutting property owners may be a way to voice concerns and alleviate fears, and I think that's a good move, and I thank the planning commission for doing that.
All right, very good. Were there any other comments about these minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Some moved approve.
Okay, we have a motion, and it's been seconded to approve and accept the minutes of the planning commission for July 28th. Any other comments about this? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. We are at number seven on the agenda, and tonight we have the honor of recognizing one of our long-term police department employees. He happens to be the retiring police chief, Chief Jim Colsette. And if you would allow me, I'd like to read some comments into the public record, and then I'll ask Jim if he wishes, he can make comments himself if he wants to about anything, you know, about his retirement or his work and all the good things that the council and the mayor are doing, you know, things like that. So let me read this into the public record. Chief Jim Colsette retired from the Wilmer Police Department on July 23rd, 2010, after over, after thirty-two-plus years of service to the citizens of Wilmer. Thirty-two years. Jim grew up in New London, Minnesota, and graduated from New London Spicer High School. He attended Wilmer Community College, which is now called Ridgewater Community College, from 1974 to 1976. He received an associate of science degree in law enforcement. Jim furthered his education by taking courses at St. Cloud State University toward a BES degree in law enforcement management. Jim is also a graduate of Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Police Command. He began his law enforcement career in 1976 as a patrolman for the city of Morris, Morris, Minnesota. He was hired with the city of Wilmer Police Department on December 16, 1977. He was assigned to the detective unit in 1980 and was promoted to sergeant in 1986. In 1993, Jim became the detective sergeant supervising the department's investigative unit. He was then promoted to captain in 1995 and to chief of police in 1999. During Jim's law enforcement career, he was a member of various professional organizations, including the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the Minnesota Chiefs Association, where he was past president, the Minnesota Police and Peace Officers Association, West Central Police and Peace Officers Association, where he was past president, the Wilmer Police and Peace Officers Association, where he held various positions. He was also a member of the Minnesota Gang and Drug Oversight Council and was a past board member of Wilmer Kiwanis, the United Way of Central Minnesota, and the East African Coalition. Jim and his wife Judy live in New London. They have three children and three grandchildren. At this time, it is my pleasure to personally say a warm and sincere thank you, Jim, from the mayor's office and on behalf of the city council for your years of service and your dedication to this community. It's simply been genuine, authentic, and outstanding. You know, what a great career. The one comment I hear is, well, he looks too young to retire. You know, the guy never looks any older. You know, he looks the same year after year after year. And that's great. That's great. And we are very happy, while we're sad that you are retiring, but we are happy that you are retiring in a way in which you can enjoy your retirement, enjoy your family, enjoy your grandchildren, and carry on with your next set of activities that you choose to do. And at this time, I would ask any council members if they wish to make any comments at this time.
Well, I will.
Councilmember Reese?
Just that, you know, I've been on the council for a long time and have had a number of chiefs, and we've had some very good chiefs, and you are one of the best, Jim, and you're going to be sorely missed. And that comes, again, like the mayor said, right from the heart. Do appreciate you very much, and just enjoy. Enjoy, have a good time, go hunting, and enjoy your grandkids. I know that's your love, so thank you so much.
Councilmember DeBlique?
Yeah, I would also like to say, you know, I've been on the council a number of years as well, and have enjoyed working with Chief Colsette. He's always been honest, straightforward, and very open in his office, anytime you call him or stop in to see him. Just very much so enjoyed working with him, and enjoy your retirement.
Anyone else? Councilmember Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just ditto's, and thank you for the wonderful job you've done for me and the council and for me personally. Anytime I had a question, boy, you're there right away, or my wife, you're right there with the answers, Jim. And I don't know if a lot of police chiefs would do that, but I appreciate everything you've done, and I hope your shears aren't too big for a chief wife-holes to fill. Thank you again for all you've done.
You want to ask him the main question one more time?
Which one? Oh, how many prisoners?
He has no idea. You've been making up numbers for four years. You could have done it.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. Jim, truly going to miss you. You've been just an absolute delight and a professional to work with. You know, we and I ask you a lot of dumb questions, and you always, you always give a very straightforward, honest answer, and with a twinkle in your eye. It's just been a pleasure, and the city will sorely miss your professionalism.
Good, well said. Councilmember Dokken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Ron said, ditto's to you. On the lighter side, I think probably back in the eighties, on an open-mic show one day, they were talking about the Wilmer Police Department, and I think I called in and made a couple of comments. And a few days later, I got a call, I don't remember whether you were sergeant then or whatever it was, but anyway, we had a nice discussion, and you were just as pleasant back then. Didn't agree with what I had to say, but you had your say, and I appreciate your straightforwardness. You're really going to be missed.
Well, Councilmember Ahmman, go ahead.
Thank you, Jim, for serving the city. Good public service for all these years. I'm sure you wouldn't be able to do this length of term or tour of duty without the support of your wife, so I'd also like to say thank you for supporting him in his career. I'm sure it wasn't easy to do, and behind your smile stands a good partner, and I can see she's sitting with you tonight, and best of luck to you both in the future. Thank you.
I knew it wasn't Swenson.
That happens to me too, Mr. Mayor. I can't remember names anymore.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Jim, I want to thank you, and you've done a terrific job. I don't think a lot of people realize just what it entails to manage a first-rate police department, which you have done during your career. And I see the quality of your work in a lot of cases that have been handled by my office, and the professionalism of your officers and the high standards. You get a lot of credit for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jim, for your service. Like the other council people said, when we had a question, you'd always get back to us, and you told us the truth. You didn't hold anything back. You were a big part in getting the cops' meetings going, and I appreciate that, so thank you.
I think it was real indicative, a week ago Friday, there was a coffee reception for Jim out at the Law Enforcement Center, and just the wide range of people who showed up, you know, certainly our own police officers and our retired officers, but sheriffs and police chiefs from adjoining jurisdictions. We even had the presence of a police officer from Alexandria, who I hope you knew he was out of the city, but he happens to be the brother of our current chief, and he came down to wish Jim well, and we appreciate him coming down, too. That was nice to have him here. But just everybody, you know, county commissioners, and everybody knew that Jim had done a good job, police commission members, things like that. So Judy, we give him back to you after all these years. Put him to work or whatever you wanted him to do, and thanks for sharing, thanks for sharing his career with the city of Wilmer. I think the basic compliment, Jim, is that you kept our city safe. Our public safety records are below average, below the incident rate of cities this size, and we're so proud of that and so pleased with that. So thanks for your leadership in doing all of that. We do have a present here for you, which is kind of our tradition when people leave office after they've been here for a while, and we want to present this to you on behalf of the city council and the mayor as just a token of appreciation for the many good things that you've done for us. And if you wouldn't mind if you'd come up and receive this, and then if you want to take a few minutes and say some things, we'd like to have you do that.
Can I say something?
You bet.
Get the last word.
First of all, thank you for all those kind words. Greatly appreciated. I truly have been blessed. You know, I've worked for an organization, the Wilmer Police Department, for a long time. I've worked for, you know, this city council for many, many years, and in the city of Wilmer, they embrace their police department. The citizens embrace them, and the council has embraced us with resources. And so that's a blessing if you work in that organization, and I thank you for that. I want to say a special thank you to the staff. You've got great staff. You really do have great staff. And, you know, I get out and about, I was president of Minnesota Chiefs Association. I've talked to a lot of other chiefs, colleagues, and, you know, Wilmer is kind of an aberration. I mean, this is a good community. It's a great community to work. It's a great community to live. It's a great community to shop. So part of that's your staff. The staff at the Wilmer Police Department, top-notch, first-rate. You're in good hands. You're in good hands. You know, we couldn't, you know, have taken on some of the challenges that we took on without the hard-working staff at WPD. They make the bosses look good. They do the work. They make us look good. I want to especially thank Mick Schmidt for having the confidence in recommending me for the chief's job. Hopefully, we met that confidence, and, you know, I'm looking forward to, like many people have affectionately heard me say, put about a number-ten spoil on three grandsons that I have. So life is good. I'm a blessed man, and I recognize that, so thank you all. And Rick Weifels is a friend of mine, so.
Jim, thank you, and Judy, thank you. As we all-
Most important person in my life. Sorry, I almost forgot her. I've been with you for 33 years. My rock, I mean, that's how you make it through some of the things that police officers put up with.
Good. All right. Best of luck, Jim, and we wish you and your family the best.
I'll see what's in here.
You certainly can.
You've always wondered, right?
Yeah, nobody ever reads that often at the end.
Should have do you up there.
Or you wonder what's in here?
The Christmas.
Wow.
Great.
Great.
So I want to keep trying, but.
Thank you.
That's all you've got now is time.
I think we're going to move on in the agenda. Is that the procedure here? Good luck, Jim. Next, number eight on the agenda is the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities presentation. And tonight, I'd like to warmly welcome Dan Ness, who is the current president of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, and the honorable mayor of Alexandria, Minnesota. And with him is Tim Flaherty from Flaherty and Hood, a law firm in the metro area. Tim is the head lobbyist for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, strategist, planner, historian, preparation of reports, writes, everything. We're glad to have them both here tonight, and at this time, I'd like to welcome Dan Ness, Alexandria mayor and president of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor Haighke. It's a pleasure to be here. Fellow council people, staff, pardon my back. Yes, we have a lot in common. We both have chiefs with the name of Weifels. There's only eight or 10 other cities that can make that same claim, I'm sure. They have a very large family, I understand. It's always a pleasure for me to visit other cities, but especially Wilmer, because we benchmark with Wilmer. We have a lot of things we think in common. We're out in western Minnesota. We compare ourselves to you quite often. And we also, when Jim was chief, he was good enough to allow us to come and tour your new law enforcement center. We just approved bids today for a new police station, so our task force is out and about getting ideas and gracious enough to come and give us all the time that we wanted to ask questions. We really appreciate that, too, so. I am past president of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities.
That's right, yeah.
I'm past president of the Minnesota Mayors Association, but I am the first vice president of the League of Minnesota Cities. Les was president one of the years when I was on the board. His presidential initiative was diversity. I took that to heart. I went back home, and we started what we call a cultural inclusiveness committee, which is now up and going, and only because the seed was planted by Les and his presidential initiative when he was president of the league. So I personally thank you for that, too, Les. Alexandria is one of 75 cities who belong to this nonprofit, tax-exempt organization, and we are an advocacy organization for greater Minnesota cities. We feel we need a strong voice to represent us from greater Minnesota. The numbers are stacked against us in the legislature a little bit. We think we need a strong voice, and one way to do it is to band together, like we've done with the coalition. And over the years, we've done a lot of things. Alexandria, for example, first joined because we had some serious annexation issues that we were struggling with. Got a lot of help because of the relationship with other cities and the staff of the coalition. Other cities have other topics that they like to have some help with. Certainly, LGA is something that most greater Minnesota cities, in the loss thereof, are struggling very hard as time goes on, and we think we need to work together to try to keep what we have, the good things that we have. The thing that I particularly like about the coalition is the advocacy thing. We were there to do just that. On the other hand, I change hats, and I'm representing the League of Minnesota Cities, 826 members, not all of whom live in greater Minnesota. We have to be very careful that we don't show favorites, and we don't show favorites. So we don't take on some of the issues as directly as the coalition can do because of our different missions. Minnesota mayors is somewhat the same way. We have mayors from metro area, mayors from greater Minnesota, and we aren't really an advocacy group there as well, but we do share and work together as much as we can, so. I also say that because of the, as you know, we're all nonpartisan in local government, and that's sometimes difficult for me, because as a person, I'm not, I'm not nonpartisan. I am legally and publicly, but I'm a lifelong Republican and voted first time in 1960 and lost to Jack Kennedy. But I'm not holding any grudges there. I think we quickly draw party designation, and we start talking for the good of our cities. And so for that reason, if there are any of you that have some uncomfortable feelings about the coalition as being an advocacy party, one or the other, please rest assured that we will challenge any party member who has an issue that we don't think is good for our greater Minnesota city. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Tim Flaherty, who is the lobbyist. We think we get our money's worth from our dues by not having to go to St. Paul whenever there's a meeting or a hearing. We spend enough time in St. Paul, though it is, but coming from Alexandria, coming from Wilmer, besides the mileage, sometimes there's overnight and meals and lodging, and we can't be there 24/7 during the legislature's sessions. Maybe we think we should, but, and it's nice to have that representation there for us. They can call us. If we have time to come down and testify, we will do that. Sometimes we don't have time. It happens too quickly, but we do need that contact there, watching over everything so that we are fully represented. So that's another good reason, I think, for the coalition membership. So I'd like to introduce now Tim Flaherty, who's our chief lobbyist. He represents the firm of Flaherty and Hood, and he has some specific information pertaining to the city of Wilmer. So this time, I'd like to have Tim Flaherty come forward.
Thank you, Dan. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. The only thing I'd add to what Dan said is that really he and Mayor Haighke have been strong participants in the coalition. We, as a lobbying firm, provide you with information, analysis, facts, but really, it's the members who come to the Capitol when they need to and talk to legislators and testify before committees. And Les was also a former president of the coalition, and we appreciate both Dan and Les's work over the years for the coalition. I would like to pass out what we call our final report. I'm going around now, or people in our office are going around meeting with each of the 75 cities, so they have a good feel for what happened in the last session, our perspective of what we think is going to happen in the next session, so. Oh, thank you, Mick. And while he's passing that out before I get started with the PowerPoint, I do want to encourage you to come to the Winona Conference. Every year, we have a summer conference. One year, it's in the southern part of the state; the next year, it's in the northern part of the state. We usually have about 100 city officials come, mayors, managers, council people. This year, every four years, we do, it's a big conference, because we have the candidate forums for both the state auditor position, which, as you know, affects cities, and the candidates for governor. And this is a tradition. We have a lot of the media come to that conference. The candidate forum this year is August 19th in Winona. Pat Lopez, who is the political director of the Star Tribune, will be the moderator of the candidate forum for governor. And of course, the primary is between now and then, so we'll know exactly who the Republican candidate, the Independence Party candidate, and the Democratic Party candidate are. So any of you can break away. I know it's hard, and it's a distance, but I think this is a very good time to see the coalition at work. Let me start, we'll run through this PowerPoint presentation. You could interrupt with questions at any time, and Mayor Ness is certainly here and has been very involved on the board of the coalition for many years, so he could help answer any questions. The first thing we want to do is point out that, of course, the governor, with fairly large state budget deficit, and we'll get into some of these details a little more, the governor had proposed $125 million- the governor had proposed $125 million in cuts in his March budget. And then, because the deficit and other issues came up during the session, he actually increased that proposal to $140 million. The legislature in March decided, they passed their first round of cuts, and they decided that they were going to cut local government aid and the market value credit $52 million. And then, that's what they stuck with in May, when they finally adjourned the session. Just a little bit of history. The governor was faced with a fairly major deficit, because state revenues have been, you know, declining. So he unallotted to balance the budget, and the cities were unallotted $192.5 million. The session started in February 10. There was a $1.2 billion deficit at that time. And the Coalition is very proactive. We don't just sit around and whine. We basically said, "Well, how can we make the cuts less than they would otherwise be?" So we actually proposed an expansion of the sales tax, and it was to tattoos and minor things, relatively minor things, to raise $60 million so that we could keep our cut reasonable. And we sought bipartisan support for that. Neither the Democrats or the Republicans wanted to do any kind of a tax increase this year, so after we talked about it, we dropped it. We also joined the League of Cities and filed, and the Metro Cities Organization. Sometimes, we do cooperate with the other cities when we can, and that's always better. So we did file an amicus brief to challenge the allotment. Before the court decision came out in March, then, the governor proposed $125 million cut in city aid. The projected deficit at that time dropped from $1.2 to $994 million. But there were a lot of things involved with the federal money and federal appropriations to the state that were affecting what the overall budget deficit was. But we came out with a different proposal than in March, to have the state cut its transit funding money and balance that with cuts to the market value credit to create a more even cut across the state. And we had fairly strong Republican and Democratic support in the legislature to do that, because it would even out the cuts, so that the property tax increases and service cuts would be very equal around the state. And many people liked that. But then, before we could really do much with that, the legislature passed what they called the partial budget fix, and that's when we lost the $52.5 million. Now, what we do, and we have our members, our leadership in the Coalition come, we came and lobbied, and we talked to legislators, and really, the important thing that we did was that we said, "Okay, we'll take the $52 million in cuts, provided there is no further cuts through the rest of the session." And that was kind of the deal we made. And it turned out to be a very good decision on our part, on our board's part. And the governor signed that bill. Well, then, when May comes along, there was, the governor proposed an additional $88 million cut to the initial cut, and we opposed that. We held a Capitol press conference and really worked on other ideas to fix the remaining state budget problem, which were discussed and debated thoroughly. Then, the big shock came. The State Supreme Court cited to throw the whole allotment out. So instead of the little deficit things that they were dealing with, the deficit suddenly climbed to $2.97 billion. The governor wanted to ratify the allotments. He wanted the legislature to ratify the allotments, which we agreed with. That was always our position. And then, he wanted to make them permanent. We did not want to make them permanent unless we were going to make all the cuts permanent. And the legislature was not willing to do that. So what happened, then, supported ratifying the allotment of local government aid and the market value credit, but we opposed making the cuts permanent, which saved really about $100 million a year in the LGA base, at least until next session. Legislature and governor passed the budget agreement. They did ratify the allotments, which I think was good, and they didn't make them permanent. So everybody's kind of on an equal footing now for the next session. There were no additional LGA and market value credit cuts. So what they really did to get out of the session was they increased the number of shifts. They didn't do just the school shift. They did other kinds of shifts in their, like in business taxes and other things. So really, and that helps add to the deficit. It hurts by adding to the deficit for the next millennium. So here's the point I want to make on this. The governor, because, you know, really, the question is, will LGA survive? Will it continue as a program? Because we are facing a $5.8 billion deficit for the next millennium. That's today's numbers. It might grow or it might shrink a little bit, but I think it's safe to say it'll be at least $5.8 billion when the next governor takes office. My point about this is, you can see, the governor's budget was fairly significant cuts. You can see in 2010, he was proposing a $316 million funding level. And the original amount was $537, but the legislature really passed $427. And then, in 2011, it's the same. So really, what my point is, is that we had a lot of strong support from the legislature, and we worked with both Republican and Democratic legislators to get those numbers as high as they were. We do have bipartisan support within the legislature. Oops. Something's... There we go. So the total session cuts, and these include the allotments, because remember, at the end of the session, they ratified the allotments. So these are the totals. $245 million. 29% of the city aid in 2010 was cut. That's a large cut. One of the arguments we use, because this is all about priorities at the state, and you can see, local government aid and market value credit is only 3.4% of the state's general fund. So when you think about trying to solve the entire state budget deficit of $6 billion, LGA and market value credit are really a small portion of that. We did take 8.3% of the cuts. Even though they're 3.4% of the budget, we took 8.3% of the cuts, unless you think schools are going to get paid back. Then we really took 16.8% of the cut if the schools do get paid back, which most people are saying they will. So how does it affect Wilmer? The governor's budget was first, the market value credit cut, he proposed a zero cut and a $681,000 cut for Wilmer. The end of the session, there was no LGA cut, but there was a $286,000 cut in the market value credit. So you can see there, again, the legislature's priority was more showing to cut the market value credit and not local government aid. It's a difference which didn't matter in 2010 and 11, but it probably will have an impact next session. For 2011, the governor's budget proposal was to cut $1,902,000 from Wilmer, and the end of session, it was cut $259, as I mentioned. So what's the big deal about local government aid? And I want to spend just a minute on this. If you look at the left hand there, you'll see Wilmer's tax rate is 28%, which is relatively low in the state. The state average is higher than that, be it like in the 30s, early 30s. The cities that receive LGA, their tax rate is higher. It's like 41%. And the non-LGA cities, those cities that don't receive any LGA, are 28%. If you eliminated the LGA program, you can see the next set of bars what happens. Wilmer's tax rate, to raise the same amount of money as you're losing in LGA, which assumes that you're going to spend the same amount, which we know would probably not happen, but your tax rate would have to jump up to 60%, very close to the rest of the cities, what would happen, and the rest of the cities have levied back what they lost in LGA. But the other cities would stay down there at the 28%. So the point of this is, LGA helps reduce that disparity. Like, right now, it's more like 41% to 28. If you get rid of local aid, your disparity is going to be more like 60 to 28. So that's why we have LGA. It's not, it's a property tax relief program, but the purpose of it is to try to allow cities to have reasonable level of service around the state at a relatively comparable tax rates. And so that's the argument that most of the legislators, even the suburban legislators that don't get money under the LGA program, they understand the need for it because of this chart. So what's the future of local government aid? I'm starting out saying, well, there's $5 to $8 billion projected deficit for the next millennium. Now, the official deficit at this point in time is $5.8 billion. That does not include any inflation in state programs or any other things. It's just what it is today under the state budget forecast. By the time the next governor takes over in January, and we get down to doing budgeting in May, you know, who knows what it'll be at that point? It could be higher, probably won't be lower, the way things are looking. It might be a little lower, you never know. But part of that $5.8 billion is all these shifts they did. So, you know, they can erase part of that deficit if they just don't pay back the shifts. But they still, under any circumstances, they're going to have, you know, like a $4 billion deficit. So that just gives you a little inside look at that. The other factors that affect the future of LGA are the election outcome. And our board has met, had an hour-long meeting individually with Representative Emmer, Mr. Horner, and Representative Kelleher, former Senator Dayton, and former Representative Vintenzis. So we have met with them. We've discussed our issues with them, not just local aid, but some of the other issues. So we have a pretty good idea where they're leaning on this. Legislative races, who will obtain the majority control? We don't really know that yet. And I don't, I think it's dangerous if you make too many assumptions. That's why we meet November 10th and 12th in Alexandria, to look at the election results and decide what is our best strategy for the next session. One of the other factors that's going to play into this is, are we going to have a state tax increase or a continuation of the property tax increases that we've seen over the last several years in local government service cuts? And then, of course, the other factor, we think, is how much do the cities care about this? How much do we advocate for it? Now, Representative Emmer has a, what he's called his fair tax plan, fair proposal. And it's on his website, where he refers to this. He wants to take the amount that you had in LGA in 2009 and put a, basically, a maximum amount at 40% of that level. Now, he hasn't committed to appropriating that 40%, but that would be the $1,730,000. So that would be the maximum you would get unless the county, he's got a provision in there that says, if they give more LGA than the 40%, it would go to the counties, and the counties could decide who distributes, which cities in the county should get that money, and basically, the county could keep the money itself. It's all in his legislation, which he introduced. And you have to give him credit. He is coming out with some specifics about what he thinks about the LGA and what should be done with it. So that's his plan as of today, and that may change. Here's the issue I raised about, if you go back to look at the history of property taxes in the state, and back in '02 is when they added a state property tax to the mix. That's the top red line there. But look in calendar year '02, this chart is from the Department of Revenue, information that they put out. Actually, they did the graph. It's their graph. So in calendar year '02, for example, there was $4 billion collected statewide in all local property taxes. And you can see how that's grown up to almost $7 billion in 2009. So one of the key issues is going to be, is that, is the legislature and the governor going to want that to continue, or are they going to change that? And that's a big question. We don't really know the answer to that, but we would argue that property taxes have gone up enough, and the state needs to raise revenues to make its commitment to the property tax relief programs, which I'm going to talk a little bit more in a minute. Okay. Now, we talked about LGA and kind of where the Coalition is on that. There are other areas the Coalition works on. We work on economic development. During the Ventura years, we passed a program called the Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Program. And Governor Ventura vetoed the appropriations for it, but the law stayed in place. And we modeled, we came up with the idea and modeled it after law in Illinois. And the idea was, cities needed to be ready, have industrial parks, so that, you know, they had public utilities in them, so that they were ready to help businesses locate there. And it turned out to be an extremely successful job, and Governor Plante has been a very strong supporter of it since he took office, and has always put money in his bonding bill for it. So it's been a very strong program. This year, we got $8.5 million in the bonding bill for it. It doesn't have to be an industrial park. If you have a business that's going to expand, and you need to provide streets and sewers and utilities for it, you can apply for this grant. It's a matching grant. I think the biggest grant I've seen is maybe like $2 million, but most of them are around $500,000, and then the city would put in another 500. So that's generally how it works. It's been a very successful program. Transportation, we work on this. There's always things that come up at the legislature, and this came to our attention this year. There was money that was transferred from Greater Minnesota Transit to the metro area. And it was done on the theory that the North Star commuter rail train was going outside the metro area up to Big Lake. So therefore, you could take the money that was going for the bus systems in greater Minnesota and put it into the train. And so we thought that was not what anybody intended, and this was done at, you know, at a state agency level. So actually, we didn't have any opposition to this, but it was just one of those things we fixed, so that that can't happen anymore. So that was, that's just an example of kind of one of the little things that we do. We don't make a big deal out of it, but it will make a difference to your transit system, obviously. Annexation of land use, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. We had some bills, townships had some bills, the legislature had big budget problems and didn't want to deal with them. So that'll probably resurface in the next year or two. CGMC advocacy is going to be important for what we do now in the, for the 2011 year, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that. This is our general strategy. 2011 is very, it's not only critical for LGA, but for many things at the state, because they are going to, in my opinion, and it's just an opinion, but who's ever elected, they're probably going to make major changes in the budget for the state and in the tax system for the state. I mean, all of the candidates are talking about these things. Even if they don't want to increase taxes, they're talking about changing the tax system. So it's kind of like a reset year. And our goal in the Coalition is to get LGA reset at a reasonable level and to keep it stable, like it was for many years, and make sure the state, when they certify an amount to you, that you get that amount that following year, so you can count on it for your budgets. That's a very big thing to most of the cities we talked to, and we think we can do that. As I mentioned, we'll have a proactive media effort. We'll have candidate forums, and we need the membership to be active. What we've done so far is, we've met with newspapers in these cities, and I think for the next round, we'll probably add Wilmer to it, the West Central Tribune. But we've had meetings with the editorial writers from these papers already. And one of the things we do, and they were very prescient, we have a packet of information on the state's budget. And the editors really needed this as background information, so they can ask candidates questions. What this pie chart really shows is... What this pie chart really shows is, excuse me, how big health and human services, education, property tax aids and credits is up on the, is in the left-hand circle, it's up towards the top. Now, LGA is only a billion dollars out of that. So you can see, the total is three point six billion. So when they start talking about cutting property tax aids and credits, they could cut local aid or they could cut a lot of the other programs that they have. So it's not a given that the local aid program is gonna be cut. It's a, but the property tax aids and credits program, I say it's a given that that's going to be cut. And it shows you how hard it is to really make up this five point eight billion dollars unless you go to the circle on the left. The circle on the right is like state government funding, and that's like six hundred and fifty million. Well, you could obviously eliminate every state agency and you wouldn't even make up a billion dollars of your six billion dollar problem. So it's, it's a really, it's really important to understand this. Now, the newspapers were very thankful that we gave them this. It's actually a big packet, this is just one page out of it. And it helps them really deal with, with the candidates and where are they coming from. Our main point was, really, that we were encouraging and saying was, well, what is your budget proposal? We wanna know what you're gonna tax, how much you're gonna tax, who you're gonna tax, and where you're gonna cut spending and whose spending you're gonna cut. That's our goal when we go out and meet with those newspapers. And as you can see, that theme has taken hold now. And the candidates, every place they go are being asked, if you watch the debate on Sunday night with the DFL candidates, questions kept on coming, be specific about what you're doing here. And I think that's all part of our thing. Message moving forward, there really aren't any alternatives that tells you that don't result in higher property taxes, service cuts, or increase in disparities among cities across the state. And the reason we're talking about that is, there's some notion that we can just have a local option sales tax. Take away local aid, let cities just have a local sales tax. That produces, if you come to the summer conference, you'd see our analysis of what that does to the varying cities around the state. It's very interesting, but it's something that I don't think we would support. We haven't in the past, I don't think we would support that. But then, the other question is, how will the candidates fix the five to eight billion-dollar budget deficit if they plan on protecting LGA? And four out of the five candidates have indicated that they really support LGA at some level. And what our job will be is to try to get them to identify that before the election and let the electorate know. Now, the coalition is a nonprofit organization. We can't really take sides in the election, I don't think we would anyway. We can't endorse candidates, we can't support or oppose candidates. We can disseminate information about positions of the candidate, we can say we oppose this position of this candidate, or support this position of this candidate. How much we do that will depend really on the board and when we see the election unfold. But from our, the perspective of the members of the board, it's not too much to ask the candidates how they're gonna solve this budget deficit and where LGA fits into it. And if they don't, if they say LGA, there's just isn't enough room for it, that's fine, that's their prerogative. But, you know, it's, then it's, it's our prerogative to distribute that information. So, public outreach, we do talk to the press, we do hope that cities will include an explanation in their tax statement of why they're making certain service cuts or tax increases. And we encourage you to question the candidates for office as they come through town, because they will be coming through town, especially after the primary. I think you'll get visits. So we just wanna make LGA a visible issue and have them address it and think about it and tell us where they, where they stand. The events I mentioned, Winona, August eighteenth to the twentieth, again, if any of you could take a day off, might be two days, it's Wednesday through Friday, but Thursday afternoon is the candidate forum. That night then, we have Carrie Miller from NPR, who does a lot of interviews of the candidates, and she's gonna be the keynote speaker. Then, on Friday morning at, at the Winona Conference is when we vote on assessments and budgets, where we spend our money and things. So, summer conference is important, if any of you could come, that would be, that would be great. Fall conferences in Alexandria, it's November tenth through the twelfth. That's where we actually decide what we're going to do for the next session. It's based on who's elected, what the budget deficit looks like at that point in time, what the members really wanna do. CGMC membership, it's very important that we maintain our membership. Obviously, with the cuts in cities, we've lost a few members. We, our high point in city membership was eighty-two, we now have seventy-five. The budget and assessments are set August twentieth at that meeting in Winona that I mentioned. The board is recommending, they already have met by telephone conference, and they are recommending that the dues be frozen at the same level for each city that they were in two thousand ten. And I wanna thank you for your participation in the coalition. Very, I think it's very important, it's had a, an effective program, and we need everybody's help to continue. Mayor Ness is here to answer any questions, and I can certainly answer any questions that, that any of you might, might have.
Tim, thank you for your presentation. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Tim, for coming out and explaining exactly what you do and why cities need, or why you need the cities on your side. Just a few questions, I jotted them down here, not in any particular order, but what is an, what is a non-LGA city?
The non-LGA cities are the cities that generally, they don't receive any money under the formula. The formula for LGA takes a city's need, what's defined by statute as need, and they subtract out what a city can raise locally with the average tax rate in the state. So some cities don't get any local government aid. So those would be the non-LGA cities. They're generally cities with lower tax rates, there are some in Greater Minnesota, but most of them are in the suburban areas. So they don't get any LGA. And that helps us show really why you need LGA to help the cities that would otherwise have very, very high tax rates.
From its inception, at least what I've been told, LGA was mostly for outstate cities and smaller cities that couldn't raise enough revenue to provide the services necessary. Are there not, even in Greater Minnesota, are there not some cities that should maybe get a little less than others?
Yes, actually, cities do get quite a bit less. Like, a city like Crookston is gonna get a lot more than a city like Wilmer. Actually, Wilmer, I think, gets quite a bit more than Alexandria. But it's all based on your tax base, you know? If you're, if you have a lot of property wealth, if you have a big, I don't know, blended paper company or a nuclear power plant in your city, you're gonna get very little or no LGA. In fact, well, like Monticello gets no LGA, 'cause they have a lot of property value in their power plant there. And some of the other cities don't get it either. And that's true in the, in the suburbs too. Like, if you think about it, like Bloomington doesn't get LGA because they've got the megamile there. I mean, so they can raise a lot of revenue with that. Or, or Rosedale up, Rosedale doesn't get any either, because it's a relatively small city with a very huge tax base. So they wouldn't get LGA on the theory that they don't really need it, because they can raise all the needs for their services with a, with a low tax rate, 'cause their tax base is so high. So that's the theory of it. But yes, you, you're somewhat correct. And the LGA has been changed over the years, the formula has been changed. It used to be that cities would get what they got the year before. That was corrected many years ago. So that the formula actually does work and cities go up and down from one year to the next. And we think, actually, the formula in law now was the formula recommended by Governor Plante. And we agreed that it was a pretty reasonable formula, and it was passed into law. And, so we don't think the formula is really the problem. I mean, it can always be improved a little bit, but it was, was studied by the Department of Revenue, they came out with the suggestions, the governor proposed it, we thought it was a pretty good formula, so we supported it. So that's where the formula came, and it really, cities all over the state get very different amounts, which causes, a lot of cities will fight, you know, 'cause they'll say, you know, even in Greater Minnesota, you get out and they say, well, why should that city get more than, than I do? We get that question in our office a lot. So we have to go back to the formula and say, well, because you can raise so much more with your tax base. Your tax base is higher, so you get less. Then they usually understand. Or take the case of, well, International Falls. Several years ago, they, they were getting a lot of local government aid, and they added a paper machine at their big plant up there, which added a whole bunch of value, so their LGA dropped significantly. And that's the way it's supposed to work. If you can raise, if you have the tax base to raise the money locally, you shouldn't get as much from the state or maybe get nothing. And that, but that does cause a lot of controversy with the suburbs. But that's, that's the concept of it.
In your travels around the state here, visiting these cities that you head up there, are any of them cutting services that you know of? And, and I know you suggested, well, wouldn't it be prudent for us to count on our LGA being cut even more for next year?
I think you should. It, it depends on how you mean "count on." We think and recommend that you should budget based on the amount the state has said they're going to give you. Now, we would agree that that's likely to be cut. How much will be cut, we don't know. Is it cut down to zero or is it cut down to the amount that you're gonna get in two thousand ten? We, we've been, and we've had these discussions with city councils all over the state. And generally, what we say is, you know, budget for what they've certified, but, but, you know, your Plan B should be, take into account, what will you do if you get less money? Like, you always budget for contingencies. And many of the cities, you know, frankly, what they're doing is they're delaying some of their equipment costs, they're delaying some of their capital costs, they're doing, they're doing a lot of things to kind of hold off. A lot of them are not filling positions. They're, you know, 'cause they're not gonna fill them until they see what the legislature does next year. I mean, that's, that's the kind of example I would give you. Have cities been cutting? Yes. Some cities have cut dramatically, other cities, I'd say more around the edges. It all depends on each individual city. Some of the cities have laid many, many people off, including police and fire. So it, it really depends on your city and your situation and how much aid you get and how you can manage it. And so, you know, it's a, but we are compiling things. By the time the next session starts, we will have, we already have compiled quite a bit, but we'll, we'll summarize it and take it in and show people how many public safety positions have not been filled and how many have been cut. We'll go into other areas. The cities have, they all respond differently, 'cause they, I think they all have different priorities. Some cities value libraries very high, and they have them cut the libraries. Other cities have cut them, you know, the number of days and the number of hours of operation significantly. So, you know, it really goes all over the, all over the board. And I, I don't know what the city of Wilmer has done, I really haven't, haven't asked, but if you send us your information, we will use it, we'll compile it with the other cities.
We've delayed some expenses, some capital purchases for down the road. We've done that the last couple of years. One final question, and again, in all these cities that you have traveled to, how many of them, in your mind, deliver an above-average level of services?
Boy, that's, I'm gonna tell you this, and it's not gonna sound maybe credible, but I don't know of any city, I haven't seen any city that, that provides, you know, it's not five years ago, it's today.
Correct.
A few years ago, I probably could've picked out a few examples. And the reason it's so hard is, like, up in Brainerd where they were, you've probably seen the newspaper articles about they, the council decided to eliminate all of their full-time firefighters and go to total volunteer. And then they reversed that decision, and it's still a hot issue in the community. But what I've seen happen over the years now is, the main cities that I work with, they have made a lot of efficiencies and cutbacks. For example, some of the cities, now I'm speaking here of Winona, has reduced its number of employees significantly, but they didn't, they kept a volunteer and a professional firefighting complement. And the reason that they really had to do that was their businesses, it's a very industrial area, you probably don't know a lot about Winona, but they've got a large number of industrial users and chemicals. And they, they could not just go to a volunteer fire department. Some people might say, you know, all of Greater Minnesota should be volunteer fire departments. And from my experience, I would say that's not wasting money when you have a part, full-time and part volunteer, when you have this kind of need in their business community. I would not say that that's a unnecessary or an above-average use. I can tell you, you know what I'd like to do is send you, I don't have the numbers with me right now, but I do have the numbers, and I think the League of Cities had these, that shows that Minnesota cities are now spending below average as a, as a group. They're spending below the national average on public safety. And I will look those numbers up and I'll get those to you. So, but that doesn't mean that cities can't make efficiencies places, but it does mean that overall, compared to other states and cities in other states, we're not, we're not on the high side of spending. And I think that's a, that'll be like one of the arguments that we'll use when we get to the, when we get to the legislature. And I think things are changing quickly, because just with the unallotments and the lower LGA, there have been a significant number of cities that have significantly reduced their, the number of employees. So I think that'll all start, we'll start getting all that data now, and it'll show, I mean, I, I'm generally very proud of the, of the cities, and I go to a lot of cities now, and I, I work with a lot of cities. And I'm proud of the way they've managed their budgets, they've cut back, they haven't complained about it. They, they've really, I think, done a very, very good job. In fact, what I get mostly from the cities, if you wanna know, is, why doesn't the state do this? Why isn't the state doing this? I mean, that's, and, and we do have numbers on that too, which show that the revenues for cities and the number of employees for cities have gone down considerably, and they really have got, well, they just started going down at the state, and they're just down a little bit compared to ours. So, but we don't wanna get into a big war with the state over this. I mean, our goal is to show, we're acting appropriately fiscally, and we're accountable, and we're doing a good job. But there comes a point when you, they just shouldn't cut. And we're, we're saying they're at that point now, they should not cut any more, because they will really distort the tax, this tax rate disparity thing that we were talking about. That'll get way out of line if they keep, if they keep this cutting. And most legislators, like I said, even a lot of the suburban legislators, even suburban Republican legislators, understand that you have to keep services somewhat reasonable and taxes, property taxes, you know, competitive for our businesses here. And so I, I think we have a lot of support in the legislature for the concept of the LGA. And each, any candidate for governor is gonna put more or less emphasis on it. And we, we need to find out what that is and, and then work with the legislature and, I mean, I can tell you right now, Senator Bach, 'cause I asked him this question, he said, "Well, do you think LGA is going to be eliminated?" 'Cause we were hearing this. And Senator Bach is chair of the Senate Tax Committee, and he said, "Absolutely not, that is not going to happen." And he's pretty, he's been pretty influential, pretty, and he's, he's a very, he's from up in the northern part of the state, but he's a very moderate person, moderate in tax policy, but he's very strong on the need for LGA. So I don't see it really going away. Could it change? Could it be reduced? Could it be reduced? Yes. But I think we have very strong vice-person support in the legislature for it. So, that answers your question, maybe too much.
Yeah, and I want to thank you for coming to Wilmer, by the way, you and Dan both.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dawkins has a question, then DeBleek.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Flatter, for coming out to Wilmer. And Mayor Ness, thank you for coming and thank you for your kind words about Wilmer. I just have one question. You indicated that the League of Minnesota Cities represents, I think, 827 cities and I understand that you, your coalition represents 70 or 80 cities, okay? My question is, why do we need both, why should Wilmer belong to both organizations? Why would we not just rely on the League of Minnesota Cities?
Okay, that's a really good question. And I think Mayor Ness can, can answer that. He's been, many of our presidents have also been president of the League. I think Les has been president of the League too, and so they, they are in a good position to answer. I'll give you my answer. Let me give you an example. Like I mentioned, this Business Development Infrastructure Program, we came up with that idea and we helped pass it and it's moving along. It's a Greater Minnesota program. And this last session, the metro area and one of the state agencies thought that they should, it's such a good program, it should be expanded statewide, should let everybody in the state into it. And we really opposed that, but the, of course, the metro cities would say, "We wanted a statewide program because we want to get our hands on that money." The League really couldn't take a position on that. I mean, the League's got the metro cities here, the Greater Minnesota cities there, and then there's others, the small cities, and then Minneapolis and St. Paul kind of are their own entities. But, so, really, it's very hard for the League to take positions when cities disagree on policies. And that happens continually. I don't know if Les would, would want to make any other comments. I think that, I think that we work very well with the League, you should understand that. I mean, Gary Carlson actually used to work for me and for the Coalition and he's their, head of their Government Relations Program now. And he does an excellent job and we work with him and we work with the metro cities. But another example would be all these property tax relief programs. Some benefit the suburbs more than they benefit us. Some benefit us more than them. So we're not going, the League is not going to be able to represent all those interests. I will give you a little information though on this, because we've looked at this over the years. Greater Minnesota doesn't have an excess of lobbyists. When you look at all the lobbying money and lobbyists that are spent by Minneapolis, St. Paul, the metro cities, the different metropolitan city groups, it's always more than what Greater Minnesota is spending. So, and we have a tougher job, as Mayor Ness mentioned, because we have a distance factor. I mean, in the, in the metro, they can just go to a breakfast meeting and be back to work by nine. I mean, you know, and they can come and testify quicker and they can do all this. So that's my answer, but Mayor Ness, do you want to say anything? Can't add anything? Okay. So, Mayor Haiki?
I would just add a couple things and then I'll call on Councilmember DeBleek. Outstate cities oftentimes have to cover the costs of certain things that metro cities don't have to cover, such as local airports or our own wastewater treatment plant. We have to cover those costs ourself. There's no city in Minneapolis, in the 11-county metro area, that owns their own airport. They're all regional airports or they're the International Airport or military airports. And so there's no city that has to pay to support its own airport. The wastewater treatment system in the metropolitan area is a huge network that is directed and managed by the Metropolitan Commission. The Metropolitan Commission is a very large committee of about 50 people, I think, and most of whom are appointed by the governor, and that changes with every governor. But yet they get statewide funding for the Metropolitan Commission. So all the taxes that are gathered all over the state that go to the legislature, a portion of that comes out and goes directly to the Metropolitan Commission, and that's what pays for their wastewater treatment services. We get absolutely no money from our state legislature, maybe we get some grants, I guess, but we don't get large chunks of money to run our wastewater treatment plant. We have to run it ourselves and pay for it ourselves. So there is, you know, another small example, that, you know, we pay for the lighting on the bypass that goes around Wilmer on the east side. The cities, the suburbs, they don't pay for lighting on all the highways that cut through the suburbs and cut through the cities. That's all paid by the state. You know, that's a, you know, that's not a huge expense, but it's probably $100,000 a year that we have to pay for. So there are, there are differences on how funding comes to Greater Minnesota cities than it comes to metropolitan cities. And it's important to have a voice that can track the changing legislature, legislative bills, can step in quickly with ideas or advice or points to consider that we would miss totally out here. We wouldn't know about it. So that, to me, that's the value of the Coalition. It's been there for 30 years. We're a charter member of the Coalition. We were one of the original cities that helped found it. And it has been very, very helpful to the cities that belong to the Coalition to have this active voice, this monitoring, this advocacy, that can move quickly on our behalf. And then they call us to come in. And they'll say, "Come in, we need you for testimony," or "We need you to have a show of force," you know, "for a press conference or something." And so, you know, people try to get in from all over the state, but if I go to St. Paul or Mick goes to St. Paul or Bruce, it's a day-long adventure. You know, it takes us all, you know, it's four hours on the road, you know, plus whatever the business is in between and you got to get back out and it's the traffic and the weather and everything else. And Tim's point about lobbyists, you know, I think Minneapolis has five lobbyists, five or six, I think?
Oh, I, I have lots.
They have a lot. They have a lot. And so does St. Paul, and you know, they all have lobbyists. We have one through the Coalition, you know, one office at least. So, those are the differences and that's why we, at least I think it's important that we, we consider, you know, hanging on as a participating member of the Coalition. It works for us and without them, we lose a valuable voice on our behalf. Did you have something else, Jim? Go ahead, and then I'll go to Councilmember DeBleek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do, of course, have Senator Gimsey and Representative Junkie that are really our voices at both the House and at the Senate. And we need to be leaning on them, I think, to a greater degree now. I think they understand what our situation is out here also.
Councilmember DeBleek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Tim, for coming out and giving this presentation this evening for us. But my question a little bit is, what, what is the history of LGA? How long has it been around? How is the state funded it? Has there been any dedicated funds for LGA?
Oh, boy. I'm going to try to really be short on that answer, but it, it's a fairly technical and long answer. LGA was started, oh, a long time ago, I think in, even in the 60s. But the LGA as we know it started as part of the Minnesota Miracle in 71, '72. But before that, there was a program of shared revenues, but it wasn't based on the program like it is today. Took into account your tax base, for example. It was just like, they sent money to the counties and the counties would, there's a formula to distribute it to the cities. But the LGA as we know it came into being in the 70s. There was another period of shortfall and that was, I'm trying to think of, it was in the 80s or, there was a time when a proposal came out to dedicate the funding for local government aid. And it was called the Local Government Trust Fund. And I really can't remember what years those were, but the idea was, the legislature didn't want to raise taxes itself. Sounds familiar. And so, what they did was they put forward what they called a county option, sales tax. So every county in the state could raise the sales tax and had the option of raising sales tax a half cent. If they didn't raise it, there wouldn't be any county or city money coming from the state. So there was like a big hammer, the legislature passed it, they knew every county would approve it, they did approve it. And so, we kept the LGA program going with the money from the Local Government Trust Fund for about two years. Then the legislature met, kind of admitted that this was just a, you know, I can't think of the right word, but it, it, so they then made the half cent, that the counties had approved a statewide tax, because every, every county had approved it just like they expected, it was in place. So then the legislature eliminated the Local Government Trust Fund and took the half cent and made it part of the general fund. That's how we went from six to six and a half cents. And then LGA funding continued. And, you know, LGA funding was fairly stable and predictable for many years. And then we started having these, well, we had the deficits and the recession. So it's not, it hasn't always been kind of this, kind of a problem. Every time there's a recession, not, and I was lobbying back in 1980 when there was a recession, and the difference back in 1980 or '82, whenever it was, was that the legislature decided everybody was going to be involved in the cuts, schools included. And all local governments would be involved in the cuts. And so each time there's a problem with local aid, there seems like there's a little different solution. The Local Government Trust Fund was in for a while, it was a dedicated source, it's kind of a screwy way they did it, and then they repealed it. So, there are, there are some discussions that we're having with some of the other city groups now about maybe bringing up the idea of dedicated funds again next year. The legacy amendment passed, constitutional amendment, I think most people understand that if you just set a dedicated fund up by statute in the legislature, that they just ignore it the next year. So there is, there will be talk, I'm sure, of setting up a dedicated property tax relief fund that the voters might approve. So I think that's one way to get around it. That's how they got money into the outdoor, you know, everybody voted for the tax and then they voted how the money would be spent. So, it's not a, it's not the best way to do state evidence, but it's, it's certainly something people will talk about. I did want to mention about Councilmember Dawkins' comments about your legislators. And really, we work with the legislators, your legislators, and we work with you to try to get them the information. And, you know, they're very busy. And, but we do talk to them. If they're on the tax committee, we really spend a lot of time with them. Yours are not on the tax committee right now, but we still keep them informed and we still let them know and try to involve them. But I think you hit it on the head, we need to get them more involved. And I think they're probably willing to get more involved. I certainly talked to Representative Junkie, who was very supportive in the House when we were going through these, these problems. We didn't really have any problems in the Senate, but in the House we did and we did contact Representative Junkie and he was very supportive of, of our positions this last session.
Tim, I have a couple of quick questions. There are 75 members of the Coalition, there are 854 cities in the state of Minnesota. How much, out of 854 cities, approximately, how many cities get local government aid and how many do not? Is it, is it 40%? 30%?
Uh, no, no. It's, the vast majority of cities get local aid.
Still get it.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's probably 80, at least 80%, I would say. I'd have to look it up, but it's, and, and of course, most of those cities are small cities. And almost all the small cities, all the small cities I'm aware of get it. So, that skews it. It's really, it's really the higher-valued, the wealthier Greater Minnesota cities and some of the higher-valued suburbs that don't get it. That's really, and that's a relatively small, small number.
And then, in terms of the state budget, how much LGA is there? How much local government aid is there? Is it, it's several hundred million, right?
Yeah. The, the LGA itself is scheduled to be $537 million for 2011. Now, the problem is, once we started talking about local government aid, now people are talking about local government aid, meaning it includes county aid, it includes the circuit breaker credit, it includes the market value credit, it includes all this big thing. And that's, that's more like, that's a lot more money. So when you hear people talk about it, you have to, are they talking about the LGA program that's 3.4% of the state's general fund? Or is it all of these other programs that people are starting to lump in together as local government aid, that's about 10% of the budget? So it's, it gets a little confusing. When we say LGA, we mean LGA, the program, the $537 million program. And, you know, there's a lot of discussions about how to redo the property tax relief system. And we want to participate in that, we want to have a say in that. I mean, we as cities in Greater Minnesota, because that, that's really where I think a lot of the activity is going to be next session, because I think they will have to, that 10% of the state budget, they're going to have to reduce that. And it's a question of, well, does it come through market value credit? Does it come through county aid programs? Does it come through circuit breaker, renters' credit, all these programs? And, because that's treated as a budget area in the, in the state and it goes through committees and they'll be given a target, like the tax committee will say, "Well, you have to reduce, you know, $500 million a year." So then they look at this big pot of programs and monies and they say, "Well, we'll take some from here and some from there and some from here and nothing from here and nothing from there." And so it's all, you know, it's all kind of thrown together. So it's, it's hard to, we mean by LGA, it's the LGA program that goes to cities, that's to equalize for tax base and need. And that's the program we have the most support for. And that's why I think it's, even though there's going to be cuts, I think it's less likely to come in that program.
Tim, any other comments from Councilmembers? Councilmember Reese?
You jogged my memory when you were talking about sales tax and the early 70s and I recall, I believe about '67 or '68 sales tax.
Yeah, '67, I think it was, when they put the state sales tax in. And that was supposed to be, it was sold a lot on the idea that it was going to be property tax relief for schools and I think other property tax relief programs. And that's when LGA as we know it today actually started, it wasn't right at that time, but by '71 it was, that's when they did the Minnesota Miracle, which went, was the, sales tax money was used to take over a lot of the school funding. And then LGA was, kind of came in as part of that, because there's reasons why you, if you do one, you kind of have to do the other.
Well, I kind of forgot about something. In '67, I was a senior in high school and I was on a debate team and on a speech team and we debated it back and forth. And my dad, being a merchandiser, and I still came out in support of the sales tax, because I felt at that time that it was a fairer way of taxing, that everybody was a part of it. But what I, what, what kind of, the question, I don't know that I got a specific question, but when you talked about the fact that the legislature went to the counties with the half a percent, and then the counties passed it, and then they took it back... half a percent, and then the counties passed it, and then they took it back and they said, okay, now it's part of the six and a half percent and it's, did the counties have any, um, ability to utilize that half a percent? Uh, what change took place? I'm a, you know what I'm getting at?
Yeah. And really, the counties really had no choice. As a practical matter, they had to approve the half cent sales tax and they did it just with the county boards. And then that money was collected and put in a local government trust fund. And my recollection is the counties got some of that money back and the cities got some of the money out of the local government trust fund. What changed there was really nothing. They, the legislature did it as a gimmick, kind of, uh, to, to get the money. And then once they got the money and the counties quote raised the tax.
Right.
Then the legislature could step in and say, well, we're not increasing taxes, we're just taking over the tax you're already paying. And so it was, it was, but there was really nothing that I saw that changed, uh, except for legislative desire and opinion that they didn't want to have a dedicated fund for local government. They wanted it in the general fund. I mean, that was, but, but that was the same, they did it just to get around a political problem of not wanting to vote for a tax increase. So they made the counties do it. And then after that happened, then they took the money.
So the county had no control over that money whatsoever?
Technically, it had control, but no, uh, county would have been, uh, any county, because some of them talked about not approving it and it would have been suicide for them. I mean, it would have been crazy. They would have lost so much state money that, uh, none of them could do it.
But all of that half a percent went to the state?
Yeah.
And then it was dispersed by the state?
Yes.
Okay. That, that was my, my main question.
Yeah. And I hope we don't have to get into that this next year. I mean, it, we shouldn't, we should do things more clearly for the, for the, you know, for the citizens to understand. Uh, there's no reason to go through that subterfuge, surely.
Well, I, I, you know, when you were talking about it, I couldn't help but think of local option sales tax.
Yeah. And the local option sales tax is another very controversial issue at the legislature. I think you've probably experienced that, uh, with trying to get approval for one. But, um, and that's going to be, like I said, next year will be a reset. Are we going to allow local option sales taxes for communities? Are they going to require voter approval? Are they going to be for regional projects? Are they going to be for operations? What are they going to be? It's going to be a very big year to decide all of these kinds of tax questions, and that's one of them. And, uh, cities have, even within our organization, have different views of that. And, um, and legislators have different views of it, believe me. And so that will be fully debated next year, I think, along with sales tax issues, income tax, um, property tax issues, property tax relief programs. It's going to be a very, very big year. And, uh, actually, I'm excited about it. Uh, we're going to make sure we have our research done, uh, and that we're ready to participate fully in it with the help of, you know, the members who will take positions in November and then will advocate for them, will back it up with good sell policy and research. And, uh, you never, you know, you never really get what you want at the legislature. Uh, you argue for it and you get something, but it's not, it's usually better than if you didn't argue at all. It's always better. But, uh, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of strong minds at the legislature and, uh, all we can do is present the best possible case for what the need is, what the problem is and what the solution is. And we've, we've done very well by doing that. We're about the only organization that comes out, like, we'll probably come out with a, a, a way to fix the budget problem for discussion. We don't think they're going to pass it, but we want to put the framework out there so we can have the discussion that we think needs to happen. And you usually, it usually is very helpful to do that to your cause, to our cause. So it's going to be a big year. I hope one or more of you will get involved in it. Uh, and the way to do that is you can get on the CGMC board. We have committees. If you want to join the LGA property tax committee, all you do is sign up. We don't fool around with a lot of meetings. We do telephone conferences. I mean, we know you, most of you have jobs. You can't just drop everything and run in the same ball every day. So we'll do a conference call usually in the morning. And, you know, we'll get twenty, thirty cities on the conference call. We'll discuss an issue, we'll take a position and, and that's that. And so you can get involved. If any of you want to be on, we've got committees on environment, economic development, transportation, uh, local government aid and land use and annexation. So, uh, they're listed actually on the back of your, uh, of your program here. And we're always looking for new, you know, the good thing about the coalition, I mean, just, we've had such excellent participation and new blood always coming in, uh, that, that we've had a very strong organization and that's the reason. We always have new people. Uh, we've got now, you know, people that have just joined in on the board. Uh, Mayor Wolden over in, uh, Wadena, who, uh, has been, was a very effective president for us. Um, we've got, uh, people that have just joined, like, uh, Mayor Algren from Cloquet is a new city and he's on the board. He's been very helpful in, uh, testifying at committees and lobbying for us. Um, there's a, there's a very wide range of people and many of them are really good advocates. They really can tell a story. They walk around the Capitol with me and we've got a bill coming up and they can talk to legislators from every place, not just their district, and they do a terrific job of it. It's just, it's a, it's a very, um, great thing to have this kind of involvement. And that's why we're, I think we're a very effective organization, have done so well.
Tim, I'm going to, uh, draw to a close at this point. Uh, we still have other business we have to take care of tonight.
Thank you.
But I, behalf of the council and myself, I'd like to thank, uh, you, Tim, and, and Dan for coming down and talking about the coalition on greater Minnesota cities.
Thank you for taking so much time tonight and thank you for your participation throughout the year. Thank you.
You bet. I'll see you in Winona. All right. Thank you. Uh, on the agenda, we are now at number nine, which is the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. Is there anyone who wishes to address the city council or the mayor tonight? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go to number ten, which is the Public Works Safety Committee Report for July twenty-seventh. Councilmember Reese?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I was not at the meeting, so, uh...
You want to pass it?
Vice Chair, Mr. Christensen will give the report.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first item on our agenda was the consideration of a tree ordinance. Uh, the proposed ordinance was brought back to our committee from the previous council meeting. Changes were made based on some recommendations to Section Seven, which had to do with transporting firewood, uh, referring back to the state statute, which governs the transporting rather than obtaining a permit for the public work from the Public Works Director. Um, after discussion, a motion is made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the, uh, uh, motion that the tree ordinance for a public hearing be set for August sixteenth, two thousand and ten.
Second. There's a motion and it's been seconded for a public hearing on a new tree ordinance. Comment? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
Our second item had to do with frost boils. Um, this was for information only. Our, uh, Acting Public Works Director presented, uh, us a comparison of public versus private costs to repair frost boils using either bitumens or concrete. It was also noted that, uh, contracting for services, including the possibility of using concrete, would be considered for our next budget in two thousand and eleven. Uh, that matter was for information only. Item number three was consideration of wastewater treatment plant project number ten seventeen B to award a bid. Ronderey of Donahue and Associates presented the bid results from our July twentieth, two thousand and ten, opening for the decommissioning of our existing wastewater treatment plant. Uh, we did receive four bids and a low bid, including the alternate A, was from Reiner Contracting, Inc. of Hutchinson, Minnesota, in the amount of two million, thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. Um, the alternate A includes the removal of the storage tanks and revising some of the site grades for future use as a holding pond by the city. Um, our engineer's estimate for the project was five million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we're quite a ways under that. Uh, Donahue recommended the award, that we award the contract and, uh, again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce a resolution to accept the bid of Reiner Contracting in the amount of two million, thirty-seven thousand dollars and authorize our mayor and city administrator into, into agreement on behalf of the city.
Second. We have a motion and it's been seconded for a resolution to accept the bid of Reiner Contracting in the amount of two million, thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, and this is for the demolition?
Decommissioning.
Decommissioning of the existing wastewater treatment plant. Comment about this? Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sat in for Councilmember Reese at this meeting and asked the question at the committee meeting, how come we missed by so much, uh, with our engineer's estimate? Uh, it was like three million dollars difference. What was, what were the factors that, uh, created that?
John, can you help us?
I'm John Bryant with Donahue. Ronderey has a family emergency, so if you don't mind, I'll try and address. Uh, Mayor Haake, even members of council. I was reviewing the, uh, the documentation that we had for the bids. It appears that the five million dollars that was, was given to you as information also had additional, um, uh, options that we chose not to bid at this time. So this was, it appears that this was at three point seven five and Steve, I believe, we budgeted three point eight million. So if it had, we had a base bid plus A, which is three point seven five, the, uh, the total project, had we taken all the options, B and C, which was enlarging the excavation, it would have been around five million.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation for the public.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call?
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
Tablique?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Item number four, again, was with the, uh, had to do with the wastewater treatment plant, plant project number, uh, zero eight one four dash D four. Uh, Mr. Bryant of Donahue and Associates presented a change order to the committee for this project. Uh, it was the pipeline installation from County Road fifteen to the new wastewater treatment facility, including the affluent discharge outfall. Uh, the change, change order basically includes riprap items to enlarge the outfall area in order to meet the final requirements of a utility permit, which is issued by Candy Bay County. The, uh, change order increases the current contract by thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. Again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve change order number two for project number zero eight one four dash D four in that amount of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighteen cents.
Second. There's a motion and it's been seconded for a resolution for a change order in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eight, eighty-eight dollars, eighteen cents. Any comment on this? Roll call?
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
Tablique?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Item number five was, uh, the consideration of Mindot Cooperative Construction Agreement. Um, we received a construction agreement for the improvement of that, uh, intersection north of Wilmer through Highway seventy-one, two ninety-four and County Road twenty-four. Um, this agreement provides the payment to the state of the city and county share of the cost of the intersection improvement, which is being shared equally between the state, county and city. Uh, the city's proposed share is, uh, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and three cents. Uh, and that would be funded by state aid funds and included in our two thousand and ten improvements budget. Uh, project is scheduled, we bid, uh, this month on the twenty-seventh and completed by the end of October. Uh, once again, after some discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed for the following, and I'll introduce the resolution to approve the execution of that agreement and authorize our mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second. We have a motion and it's been seconded for a resolution to execute an agreement between the city of Wilmer and Mindot for this construction project. Comment? Um, I want to ask either our city administrator or our city engineer, um, you have seen the full documents of what this is all going to look like and it, and it meets your approval as staff and engineer?
We've seen the agreement, Mr. Mayor, and the construction drawings and it's what the city agreed to.
Okay. Does that include streetlights at that intersection? Because that was something they, Holly, can you comment on that? Because they, Mindot said that they would put them in when they were here many months ago.
Yeah, the proposal does include streetlights for that intersection.
Because there, there are no streetlights there now.
Right.
Okay.
There's a, correct. There will be streetlights included.
So that intersection will be fully lit at night.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick question, uh, maybe the chief can, uh, Whitehouse can answer this. Have, have we had any, um, accidents there within, I don't know, the last twelve months or so? It seems to have been, uh, pretty quiet out that side of town.
If memory serves me correct, I don't think we did in the last twelve months. People are maybe being a little more cautious.
I don't recall the, the exact date of the last one there, but it, you're right, it has been quiet out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Amen?
Mr. Mayor, on page eight of the agreement, um, your issue or your question regarding the lighting is pretty well explained there. As far as the state, uh, is that we approve the electrical, uh, lighting, uh, they would be, the state will be obligated for, including all monthly electrical service expenses necessary to operate the lighting facilities. Um, my question is, uh, at the top of ages, state shall provide maintenance to the sediment pond without cost or expenses to the other parties. I didn't realize we had a sediment pond on that plan. I'm just curious where it was. And is there a settlement pond? It's on the bottom of page seven and the top of eight. Um, I was just curious, other than that, the agreement, the agreement looked very fair and echoed all sides involved tonight.
Yeah, there is a small sedimentation bond, pond at the north, part of the intersection to, um, help accommodate some of the stormwater and the regrading of parts of that intersection.
All right. Thanks very much.
Ready to vote?
I, I got a question from what Steve brought up. What section was that, uh, utility, the lighting in?
Page, page eight.
Page eight, top of the page, or one paragraph down. And then the third paragraph says, upon completion of lighting facilities, construction the state will provide for all proper maintenance of those facilities without cost or expense to the other parties, including, include paying all monthly electrical service expenses necessary to operate the lighting facility. So they're going to be taking care of that.
Well, see, that, that brings up a real question then to me. I, I, I mean, that's great.
Yeah.
But I, I, then, why are, why is the state going to provide the electrical service? You pay the power for the lights in that case where on the bypass, city pays for it? I don't understand that.
I was just glad, glad I saw it in.
No, I, I am too, but I don't understand the, why it's that way. I'm not saying it's a bad deal, but I, I just don't understand why.
I can't, I, I can't explain it. Uh, Mr. Reese, I guess you'd have to, unless Holly knows the answer, but you'd have to ask one of the state officials what their rationale is. They just have always been reluctant to work with us on that bypass around the south side, for example.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, roll call?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
Tablique?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Item number six, uh, came from our fire chief, uh, to consider fire training for the, uh, his department. Um, the department received a request from the property owner, Mark Nelson, of the old Happy Chef slash Rick's Royal Steakhouse, which is located at, uh, twenty-three hundred East Highway twelve, to conduct a burning train, training burn, excuse me. Um, all necessary permits will be obtained and an asbestos inspection performed prior to this burn, uh, that would be conducted. The, uh, burn slash demolition is planned to take place over the remainder of the summer. It was noted that, uh, the opportunity to train in a commercial building does not happen very often, so they were happy they could do this. Um, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the motion to approve a request, a request to train... I will introduce the motion to approve a request, a request to training burn at 2300 East Highway 12.
Second.
There's a motion and it's been seconded to approve the request of training burn at 2300 East Highway 12. Comment on, Councilmember Ammon?
Oh, just a quick question. I don't know what the long-term plan is. Is this for future, future development or is, and that's one question. The other one is the market value of the property now and what it'll be once it's burned down and how that's going to affect us.
I imagine that once it's burned down, it wouldn't.
There won't be much value left, and I'm just curious what the reason, is the building condemned or is it's not condemned and might, might need some maintenance, but otherwise...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, based on what we know, the, the owner apparently is of the opinion that the property will be much more marketable if the building is It's his call.
Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, at the council, or at the, at the committee meeting, I asked the question of Chief Calvin, and it indicates in here that training in a commercial building does not happen very often like this one. He had some really interesting ideas about why this is so good, and in fact, we have a number of new firefighters on our department. I wonder if you could just comment on why it's important to do this train.
Mayor, Councilmember Dawkins, the reason for this type of training is that our firefighters don't get an opportunity to do large room searches, those types of things. Let's try it again, shall we? Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dawkins, the reason is, is that we have some new firefighters and we don't get an opportunity to train in these. We can do large room searches, that type of thing, that we're not able to do in the smaller homes. And it just gives us that opportunity to enhance that level of training. You know, most of the training we do is for single-family home fires, residential fires, and this is a commercial application that we can use, so it's to our benefit.
Yeah, I think you indicated it's been quite a while since we've done something like that. Is that not correct?
Yeah, the last one was the steakhouse on the south, South First Street was the last one we did, it's a number of years ago.
Thank you.
Chief, has there been a date set for this yet?
No, there hasn't. We want to get the paperwork done first and see where it goes from there, then we'll have to do the asbestos testing. Mr. Nelson did not want to move forward with any of that until this action was taken tonight, and we'll move forward, I would guess by fall, it'll be done.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Our next item, item number seven, had to do with the consideration of a grant application on the Becker Avenue redesign project. Our planning and development services director informed the committee of recent discussions with the Minnesota Department of Transportation relating to this project. The city's project qualifies as an applicant for what's called a Tiger Two grant, and that would be through the U.S. Department of Transportation. The grant fund all but 1% of the $1.8 million project with the city's local share would not exceed, excuse me, with the city's local share not to exceed $25,000. The concept of the project was presented to the council by the architect earlier this spring and includes a reconstruction of six blocks of Becker Avenue in the downtown, including a convertible section for markets, a multi-use trail corridor, stormwater planters, curb bump outs, and improved pedestrian environment. Construction could take place in the 2000, in 2011 if the application is successful. Once again, this is just an application. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution authorizing the submission of the Tiger Two grant by MINDOT to assist in funding for the Becker Avenue redesign project, and welcome any discussion on that.
Second.
There's a motion and it's been seconded for a resolution to submit an application called the Tiger Two Grant for the Becker Avenue redesign project. Councilmember Christiansen?
I have a few comments to make. After I left the meeting, had, had some thinking to do, and this money is coming from federal government, which is basically stimulus money. One question I have is, the city's putting on the line here for $25,000, and I know that the planning and development director and Ms. Doherty said that they would get this money from the private sector. I, I would like some commitment on that, on those dollars as we're going into our 2011 budget discussions, and $25,000 doesn't seem like a lot, but it sure could be if LGA is cut considerably next year. Another concern I have is the, I guess I would call it maybe a conflict of interest. I'm wondering where we stand on having Ms. Doherty apply for the grant, write the grant, sit on the Downtown Design Center, and the benefit, a large benefit of this is the block she's on. Is there, is there any conflict of interest there? Is there something we should be concerned about, or is this just go as we go?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, with regard to Mr. Christiansen's second question, the Design Center is not involved with the, the actual application that's being written and submitted by MINDOT.
Okay, and the, and the first question on the $25,000, where would we get that if it is not supplied by the private sector? I mean...
Well, I, she made those comments at the meeting the other night. There are, of course, other options, but if you want to somehow formalize that commitment, I, I guess that you could make a motion to that effect.
To amend it?
The bottom line is, the resolution we're passing is committing the city to that amount.
Correct, this resolution, once again, is for applying for the grant. It's not the grant itself, but we are putting the city on the line for $25,000. I, I will amend that, but I would like to make one other comment, and that is, from my understanding, that project is from First Street down to Fifth, Sixth Street, it is a new entryway to downtown Wilmer, an extension of bike paths to downtown Wilmer. And she noted at that meeting that, or at least I took it, that the, this is going to enhance the, or broaden our tax base down there so that then the values of these properties would be upped and we would receive more tax benefits from that. Is that the case? I mean, maybe Bruce can answer that.
Mayor Hikee, Councilmember Christiansen, I don't think there's any way to state with any degree of certainty on the front end that that will occur definitely, but it certainly provides a framework for redevelopment downtown, additional redevelopment downtown, and any time you can bring more people downtown and create that activity, by, that activity by its very nature is going to translate into development and tax base.
Okay, thank you. I will make an amendment to the motion that, let's see, how can I word this? The $25,000 be solicited from property owners or from the private sector in general to cover that $25,000?
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded to amend the original motion with a statement that indicates that if, if the grant is approved, that $25,000 will be raised from the private sector. Councilmember Reese?
I need to understand that better. Not being at the meeting, I don't know what was said. It's...
Well, the, the grant application as it stands requires a, I don't want to call it a match, but a city involvement, or community involvement of $25,000. Now granted, putting up $25,000 for the amount of money we're getting is pretty cheap. I mean, it's, it's a good deal for us, there's no doubt about it. I still feel that the, that $25,000 and Ms. Doherty suggested at our meeting that the $25,000 she would solicit from the private sector. And I would like to make that part of the motion, that that money be solicited from them instead of, well, when they did the, hired a consultant to do it, you know, that money was supposed to come from the private sector, but it came from HRA, City Wilmer, and one other government entity, I forget what it was.
Did, did you feel that she had some commitments from private businesses, that, that there's some degree of certainty on this?
I don't know if she would have made that statement without maybe that, but I, I can't guarantee that, and I don't know if she could. But I think they should be involved in it. I mean, the, the benefit is Becker Avenue.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not debating with you, I just want to get a better feeling for it, and I, and I really, not being there, it's...
Well, I may be all wet, but I, I would like the council's, you know, feeling on it.
Councilmember Anderson?
I'm, I'm confused a little bit too. You know, $25,000 is $25,000, but we, we stand to gain 1.8. That seems like a very good investment on my part. So I don't know why we want to formally say that, that the private sector has to come up with $25,000. If we, if we have the understanding that, that they're going to do that, even if they fall somewhat short, it's still a terrific deal for, for the city of Wilmer. We did approve this concept, you know, earlier this, this year. I, I would hate to have, have that restriction make this whole thing fall apart in any way, shape, or form, because I, it, it seems like an incredible opportunity if we get the grant.
Councilmember DeBlick?
Yeah, I, I don't see why we're tying this to, to having private funds come in. I think Councilmember Anderson is right, this whole deal could fall apart if it's, if it's tied to, to a commitment that a private party be able to have to come up with the $25,000. I think the commitment should be from the city to provide the 1% if we are successful through the grant, and we can ask the private sector for those funds, but I think we need to make a commitment upfront that if those funds aren't there, that we're, would be willing to, to participate in this grant.
On the other hand, we've donated to the consultants fee, how many thousands of dollars that was, and per year, we were giving $60,000 a year to the Design, Downtown Design Center, and then presently, I think it's 30, so it's not like we don't have an investment in it already. And $25,000, you know, it isn't a lot, and we're getting a lot for that return on it. However, we're in budget meetings here from here on out, trying to set next year's budget, and we've got wastewater, or excuse me, stormwater problems we could throw money at, we've got train noise we could set money aside for, and, and there's a slug of others, maybe pothole patching, for all I know, but there's a lot of other things that that money could be spent on, and somehow, the, the, listen, Becker Avenue is benefiting from this. There's four or five businesses on there, one of them being the hospital. What's to say they should, I mean, if the investment is so great on this end, why wouldn't they put some money in also?
Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Christiansen. On open mic today, Mr. Schmidt indicated that they were caught by surprise on this, on these dollars. I guess I'd like to know, when did we know about this? And again, I agree with Ron, I don't believe it was in the five-year capital improvement. I think we could have put that money toward quiet zones, open either end of Lynchfield Avenue. There are many things that we could be doing with that $1.8 million, and I'm wondering why this project rose to the top.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, this is, if you look at, in your packet, you'll see that there are more than a handful of projects, and the way it was explained to us, incidentally, we received notice that MINDOT wanted to include this in their application the day before the Public Works Committee met, or maybe the day of, I don't recall exactly. But it's a combination of, of projects, and it rose to the top simply because MINDOT chose to include it in their Tiger Two application.
If I could, or go ahead, Mr. Ammon?
I was at the meetings of the Wilmer Design Center, I serve on that, and there's been a lot of discussion through the years, and I, I know that they're very appreciative of the city council's movement in the concept design of the new complete street, which is the new buzzword with MINDOT on new streets. Looking at what this could offer, and I appreciate where Councilman Dawkins and Councilman Christiansen are coming from, but when I look at the $25,000, it would be great if we could get local participation. I think that would be fantastic. But when you look at the overall benefit, and the age of the street, and what we're getting for the dollar, there's, there's a no-brainer. We should be moving forward this project if we should get the funds, and that's if we should get the funds. I hope we get the funds. There's a group of committed people that are trying to keep the downtown alive, and for a little over a year, I've been on that board. I don't think there's any prejudice to one person or another, it's just for the benefit of the downtown area. And I honestly feel that if there was not that board working towards these small little projects that are, that keep moving on, we would have less of a downtown area. I, I support the motion as it stands, although I'm, I wish Bev was here to explain that because I, I was not aware, I wasn't napping at the time, it came up for the volunteer participation of $25,000, but this came up relatively quick. And if Bev said that there was $25,000 available, or somebody was going to commit to it, I would take her word on it, if she said she was capable of getting the funds. I'm not sure if it's private or other government entities, that I don't know. That hasn't been discussed at the committee. If that's standing help anybody here, I thought I'd just open myself up to what was happening at the meetings.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a, a great program, and I hope, and I wish they, they get the grant. One scenario would be if the city just did an overlay from First Street to Sixth Street. Our costs would be well over $25,000 to pay for the properties that we wouldn't be able to assess, because there isn't that many storefronts on that, on Becker. So I think it's a great project, and I hope they, they're successful.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I came, as a surprise to me, Mr. Dawkins, because the number was significantly lower than what the architects had estimated by a couple million dollars, I believe. That was the big surprise. Now, if we didn't apply for the grant, and I'm not advocating for the Becker Avenue project one way or another, I don't have a business over there, but I'm wondering, how would we pay for the project if we didn't have the grant? If, if the city council approved of the concept, and we, we were, we or the architects, somebody was authorized to see how we could maybe secure some, some grants to pay for the project, but absent this particular grant, if they were to move forward with the project, the city's contribution would be 10 or 20 times more than what you're talking about tonight, and then you'd be looking at significant assessments to property owners, of which there are few along the route.
My comment is a couple of things. One is, this seems like it's more of a policy issue rather than a project issue. You know, we, we have a history in this, in this community of supporting projects that aren't totally funded. Case in point, baseball stadium. That was put together with a partnership of funding sources, school district, college, the private sector, in-kind services, insurance... the private sector, in-kind services, uh, insurance money, and the city. And it came down to the end, and, and we were about $75,000 short, because one of the banks had given a grant of money, so, um, I think it was about $125,000, to the baseball stadium project, and they tried to raise money on the private sector, they raised some, and they were short about $75,000. The city council approved, paying that off in stages, and now we're down to, I think, about $35,000. And we'll keep nibbling away at it until it's finished. Uh, the aquatic center, when that first came before the council, back in the, um, whenever it was, 2001 or 2002, it, it came through the benevolence of the Olson, of the Dorothy Olson Foundation, and they, uh, approved, I think, $2 million. Well, the council wanted more than what $2 million would build, and so we decided to fund the rest of it as a city. And we got, uh, money from the utilities, we got money from the city, and I think we wound up with, what, about a four, $4.2 million aquatic center, something like that. Um, but that came through public, you know, through, uh, the council here. And if, if, if we are going to start doing, uh, a more stringent way of funding, you know, like this, where it says, "They gotta come up with $25,000," and it should be from the private sector only, we should set a policy about that. Otherwise, it's gonna be kind of pick and choose which projects are gonna be funded by public money, um, or which projects are gonna be funded by the private sector. And that's not a good way to do government council business, unless you've got policies in place that the council has supported. So, should we require that the private sector support that? I would say not until we have a policy about this, because we are, we have inconsistency in what we've been doing over time. And I, I don't think it's right to single out one project and say, "Now you have to do it this way," when we've done it other ways for other projects, until you set a policy.
Well, the reason I bring it up, uh, and the only reason is, 'cause I've had phone calls and, and, uh, conversations at coffee, uh, with people about the, the Becker Avenue project, and, and I didn't vote for the design, by the way, uh, Mr. Reese and myself did not. We thought it should have included maybe a little more downtown. I'm not against this grant, we're applying for it, because it's a heck of a deal for us. I will agree on that. Uh, but it's, some of these conversations and phone calls think that they're getting, um, you know, Becker Avenue's getting the, the best deal down there, I mean, nothing to do Litchfield Avenue, around the blocks, Fourth and Fifth Street, uh, that's the only reason they're bringing it up. And then with that, I withdraw my amendment motion.
Who seconded that?
I did, I'll withdraw my second.
And I'll call for the question.
All right. Uh, we're back to the original motion, which is stated to submit the grant, uh, that'll be written by MINDOT and assist in the funding of the Becker Avenue redesign project. Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Amon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
No.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
The resolution passes.
Uh, there's no further business that came before the committee, and, uh, I'm moved to file the minutes if, uh, there are no further questions.
We have a motion that's been seconded to file the minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the consideration of Rack Eight Tri-Caster Pro Network Production Switcher. Boy, that's a mouthful. Who's gonna explain that one? Kevin?
Mayor Haiki, members of the council. In the 2011 proposed budget, we had a $9,000 entry for a Tri-Caster Pro New Tech Production Switcher, which is a rather integral part for all productions for the Local Access Television Studio. Unfortunately, we did not make 2011, and it crashed not to be revived, uh, at the last council meeting. Staff was, uh, authorized to go ahead and take quotes, find the best replacement, and, uh, we've also sent our staff on some training episodes at, uh, Little Falls, and again, coming this week in Minneapolis, so that we can be up and running quickly on this new production equipment, and it's staff recommendation that we, uh, adopt a resolution taking money out of the Rack Eight reserves into the budget to cover that expense. The dollar amount after its purchase, however, uh, is just a couple hundred dollars short of $8,000. I would introduce the resolution.
Second.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded to introduce this resolution. Further comment? Is this a roll call, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Roll call?
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resol, or, the resolution passes. Next is the consideration of a one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license, Wilmer Design Center for their, uh, Dinner El Fresco, it's their annual fundraising event. Kevin, you wanna explain?
Uh, well, you've pretty much hit it all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
This is about, maybe the third annual event, is one of their fundraisers, and their, uh, wine activity, uh, does require a license, and, uh, this has gone through the chief of police, and this has been approved by the city attorney for its license, and it's staff's recommendation that we approve this on a roll call vote.
Motion to approve. We have a motion, it's been seconded to approve this, uh, on-sale liquor license. Comment? Uh, roll call?
Councilmember Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That, uh, permit is approved. Just to comment, that event, it happens this Thursday night, uh, of this week, and I would encourage the public and council members and staff, if they're able, to try to attend. It's a well-conducted, uh, dinner and entertainment, uh, on behalf of the Wilmer Design Center. Next is the consideration of a city park special event off-sale liquor license holder permit, Torgerson Properties. Kevin?
Mayor Haiki, members of the council, there was an application submitted by the United Way of West Central Minnesota, and they were gonna hold an event at the Gurry Andreson Shelter on Robins Island. They have a request to dispense alcohol, and so that application was advanced to the Community and Recreation Advisory Board, who has oversight to our parks, and they gave their approval. The actual license holder that will be dispensing alcohol is Torgerson Properties, and, uh, the city council is required to, or is, before the city council, this permit for the sale of alcohol in a city park. So it's a little different permit than the prior one.
Thank you, Kevin. Council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded to approve this city park special event liquor license for Torgerson Properties. Comment? Councilmember DeBlick?
Um, just a question, Mr. Mayor, on this, the policy of doing this, uh, we don't allow alcohol in any of our parks at any time, right now.
Or, ordinance prohibits all alcohol in the parks-
I guess-
...subject to, subject to a city council-approved permit.
Have we ever approved a permit for alcohol in a park?
Well, considering Swanson Field is a park, yes, we have never approved any alcohol for Robins Island.
To my point, this, this is gonna be a major change in policy, that we start allowing alcohol at Robins Island.
Yes, sir. Have we ever denied one? We've never had one before the council.
We've never denied one at Robins Island. Never had a request, all right?
No, first time.
Any other comments about this? Okay, the motion's on the floor, roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That, uh, motion and permit is approved. Number 14, the consideration of livestock swine or foal permit at, uh, Covered Shelter 222 West 15th Street. Kevin?
Mayor Haiki, members of the council, this is our annual, uh, review of the, uh, application by Luther Septon to keep thirty, or 32 chickens in their cages. The police department reviews it every year, and pursuant to our ordinance, uh, this option is at the pleasure of the city council, so it cannot be authorized by city staff. The recommendation is to approve the license.
So moved.
Second.
There is a, a motion, and it's been seconded to approve this, uh, permit. Comment? Are there questions? Councilmember Amon?
No horses this year in the permit?
Uh, no horses.
Okay, thank you.
What, what is going on in this property? Is it for personal, private use, or is he, somebody raising foal to sell, or what's going on here?
Uh, well, I don't know if they would sell them, I don't have those details, but I suspect it may be for, uh, shows and so forth, so I don't really know unless-
Do you have any information about this?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I received information that it was, uh, exactly what Kevin indicated, is there show chickens, presented in Parisian, etc., since, is somebody using, pretty damn for show.
Is this this place that's kind of tucked up against the bridge on the west side over here? By the car wash?
It is, right, right next to the, between the railroad tracks and, uh, car wash. Luther Septon.
Luther?
Luther Septon.
Septa.
Septa, okay.
Septon.
Septon. All right, any other comments? Uh, this is a, a roll call, Kevin?
Uh, no, sir, it need not be.
Simple motion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Uh, we have to reschedule the city council meeting in September due to Labor Day. What's the suggestion, Kevin?
Tuesday, September 7th at 7:00 PM. Your staff's suggestion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded to move the first city council meeting in September to Tuesday, September 7th at 7:00 PM. Comment? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I have a couple of announcements here. One is, there is a citywide cops meeting for Tuesday, August 3rd, that's tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, in the conference room of the Wilmer Fire Department, uh, located on First Street and Trot Avenue. Uh, this is the, uh, we're changing now from having individual ward cops meeting to having monthly all-city cops meeting, so this is the start of this change. Uh, again, it's Tuesday, August 3rd, 7:00 PM at the Fire Hall, uh, Training Room, starting at 7 o'clock tomorrow night. Uh, also coinciding, uh, National Night Out is scheduled this week. Chief, for what, what night is that?
Sorry, uh, it's August 3rd.
Uh, tomorrow night also?
Correct, it's, uh, from 5 to 7, which would be right before the cops meeting.
And that's at Robins Island?
Correct.
Okay. National Night Out at Robins Island, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, just prior to the all-city cops meeting at 7:00 PM. Then, uh, we have a, um, Wilmer Police Department Cookout and Safety Fair, well, that's the same thing, Tuesday at Robins Island, 5 to 7:00 PM, free hot dogs, chips and pop, games for the kids and adults, rock climbing wall, uh, free bike safety checks, Black Hawk helicopter, ambulance, fire trucks, rescue squads, safety information booths, drawing for two bikes. Chief, are you gonna be calling for bingo again? Bingo, led by the police chief and others. That's, uh, Robins Island, Tuesday night, 5 to 7:00 PM. Now, um, council committee meeting dates, finance, or, do you got something?
No.
Finance?
Uh, finance committee will meet Monday, the 9th-
At 4:45.
August 9th, 4:45, at City Hall, City Finance, Public Works, Public Safety.
I did not talk to staff, I have no idea if there's anything scheduled, I was looking to them, but, uh...
No announcements? Do you want to reserve a time, or?
I'd reserve the 10th.
All right, so the 10th at 4:45.
We can always cancel it.
August 10th, Public Works, Public Safety. Uh, labor, nothing scheduled. Uh, community development?
August 12th, 4:45.
August 12th, 4:45, that's a Thursday, Community Development Committee meeting. Any other announcements that the councils make? Councilmember Amon?
One, uh, one comment, Mr. Mayor and council, um, received in our pack this weekend that we had a, Ralph Stanfus, who is the chairman of our Stormwater Task Force, is resigning, uh, from his position, and, um, I guess he's been on there for about a year and a half, I just hope that we send him a letter of thank you, um, or personally call him for his work. I believe it was due to a res, uh, potential or possibility of a conflict of interest with his job, but he was doing an outstanding job when he came here and gave us a presentation. I just wanted to make that a point. And also, here we were talking earlier, Mr. Mayor, about the $25,000 from the Downtown Wilmer Design Center bounty for the county, you mentioned it early, for $50, these tickets are all fresco, eaten out. Last year I was there, and the tickets aren't cheap, but it's a fundraiser, and it's a good time, and, and I hope you, or somebody else from the council, uh, will show up. Thank you very, very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Steve. Any other things from the council? Councilmember DeBlick?
Uh, miscellaneous, uh, just request to be excused from the August 16th meeting.
Right. Anything else? Councilmember Fagerly?
Just a clarification on our new cops meetings, if five or more of the council people are there, that's okay, 'cause it's a public meeting, or?
Good, good point.
That's a good question, good point. I thought we had that issue before.
That wouldn't be okay without proper notice. So what do- As a practice, if that many council members plan to show up at these monthly cop meetings, then we would go ahead and publish the notice.
Okay.
It's tomorrow night.
It's tomorrow night, we better know who's-
Uh, while we wouldn't have time for tomorrow night's meeting.
Which council members would, are likely to attend tomorrow night?
I'm out of town.
One, two, three, more maybe. Steve, were you thinking about it, or?
Well, we're, Rick and I were just making gestures to one another, I'm not sure. Uh, I'll go if you don't want to go, or vice versa.
I don't think I'll get back in time.
Okay, so I'll go. Seriously.
Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Inasmuch as we're having so much activity tomorrow night at Robins Island, we have a flagpole out there that my friend Jim Halsey, a Marine from World War II, has said, "How come we don't have a flag flying from our flagpole?" I think we need to get a flag, and if we need lights to light it at night, we need to get some lights installed, so we have a, it's at the entrance to Robins Island.
I think we might look into that. Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.
This is a fun meeting tonight. It was education.
Why isn't there a flag?
I was feeling sorry for him, I was feeling sorry for him, Stanbuck. I had a bunch of questions. I'm not gonna worry.